Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Tuesday, July 13th. I would ask that we rise and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
By all means. Trustee Hugo. Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself, obviously here. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes, present.
Six members present. A quorum.
Thank you.
And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda. Motion by Mr. Fike, support by Clerk Robertson.
Okay. Motion by Fike, supported by Robertson.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on to public comments. We will have that portion of the meeting at this time. If you would like to make public comment, we'll start on the left side of the room here towards the front. Ms. Shapiro.
Good evening. Good evening.
We just asked that you state your name and address, and we asked anybody speaking to the public, try to keep it to three minutes.
My name is Monica Shapiro. I live at 9413 Burning Tree Drive in Grand Blank. I'm the president of a group called the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid, which is working to work with the township to bring non-motorized paths to all our public roads. I want to start off by, again, thanking Scott for doing the Dort Highway path. He believes in pairing non-motorized pathways with major construction jobs, and he made it happen this time. As far as I know, I've never seen it done before, but he got it done. There were a lot of setbacks, but he prevailed, and it sets a precedent for future construction projects in the township going forward. I would love to see a link to any drawings, schematics that you have of the path on the township website. I'd like to see it on an easel in the lobby because I think it's one of the greatest things that you've done so far. So congratulations on that. I'm also very excited to hear that you're planning to include a path whenever the Baldwin Road redesign happens. That's another great, great step. And thrilled to hear that there seems to be a plan in the offing of the board to put sidewalks on Hill Road, another huge, important go-ahead from the board. And another great thing that the township is doing is widening Grand Blank Road. This major improvement represents millions of federal tax dollars coming back to benefit the township. And we don't raise taxes. We get this great improvement, and we didn't raise our tax rate, our very low tax rate that Scott is rightly proud of. It's definitely needed. People have been complaining about the traffic flow on Grand Blank Road, and the traffic flow is one of our greatest assets as a town. We have smooth traffic flow. We have good... It's a great place to drive. We'd like it to be a great place to ride and walk as well. The Embry Roundabout is a great solution to a longstanding problem, and when they put it in, working with the city, you protected the existing path, which is a totally great thing to do. I'm very happy with that, too. And of course, making a safer left turn into Bicentennial Park off that bridge is something we've long needed and wanted. I'm a citizen representative to the Metropolitan Planning Commission Alliance, and I was elected as a trustee to that organization this year. The Board of Trustees representative to the alliance, Joel Fike, will share some important information about deadlines and eligible funding sources that we were given at our most recent meeting. The $2.8 million second phase of the Grand Blank Road widening job has been put off until 2023. It was supposed to come in 2022, but it's been put off for an extra year. Because of the delay, there is barely some time to add non-motorized to this job, the same way as Scott was able to do with the Dort Extension and with what he plans to do with Baldwin. Four agencies, the Metro Planning Commission, the Road Commission, MDOT, and the DNR are willing to meet with our Grand Blank Grid Friends Group and the township to discuss adding a pedestrian bridge and multi-use path along the south side of Grand Blank Road beyond the park. Right now, we have the path to the park, but all the residents, the many rental residents beyond the park cannot get to the park. They can see it, but they can't access it. So we would be talking about putting in a standalone pedestrian bridge and a path for those residents to be connected to the park. And a ballpark estimate from Fred on the bridge, he says $600,000 for a pedestrian bridge, which is low and great, but I talked to the TAP grant guy in Lansing, and he says, "Might be more like a million." You know, he thinks that's low. But Fred says 600, he says 400 for a section of path up to Thorn Ridge Road. So that would be adding $1 million to the $2.8 million second phase of this job. It is a leap. It would be difficult. It would be... The timing is off. We're a little late for a lot of the grants cycles. Who knows if it could be done, but all the agencies that I mentioned, I've spoken to, and they are willing to meet with us and at least discuss the possibility. Our group has lawyers, engineers, grant-writing professionals, all ready to assist with any aspect of this attempt. We have private donors who are interested in contributing matching All I can say is, think of the positive impact this would have on township residents and your legacy as a board, to have paired three non-motorized projects with our three largest construction projects. It's a small window of opportunity to add to this project that's already quite a great thing that you're doing. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro. We appreciate the support from the Grand Blank Grid, and yours in particular. Anybody else on the left side? Anybody on the right side wish to speak? Anybody else? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment. And at this time, I do have a letter from a resident that they asked that I read, and it's dated July 6th. Proposed strip mall at Dort and Cook Roads. Dear Mr. Bennett, we are writing to you and the Grand Blank Township Planning Commission on behalf of everyone in our neighborhood to oppose the rezoning of the property on the soon-to-be-completed Dort Highway Extension. This is still quite a rural area with families that have horses, chickens, and an abundance of wildlife that roams freely through our fields and forests. We do not want this peaceful area to change into a fast-paced, brightly lit commercial area. There are enough fast-food chains, convenience stores, gas stations, and pizza parlors less than 10 minutes from the proposed site. Please, 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 we beg you, don't spoil our lovely neighborhood. We moved here to enjoy the serenity and peacefulness of nature, and we don't want that to change. Thank you for considering our opinion. John and Shirley Looney, 2276 East Cook Road. With that, at this time, we are going to move to the next item on our agenda, which is, we have some recognition that we would like to share. And one of the things that we're privileged to have as a township is a number of volunteers, both on planning, zoning, ZBA, Board of Review, and our Historic Commission. I don't think I'm leaving any out, but they volunteer hours and hours of time preparing for their meetings as well as at the meetings, and they help us protect the integrity of our township, both by helping us with where things are going to be built, how they're going to be built, what this township desires to have, what we don't desire to have. And I have to say that I think one of the reasons why Grand Blank Township is what it is is because we have a longstanding tradition of having a Planning Commission, a Board of Review, all these different commissions that help us protect our integrity and to help the residents of our community and business owners to continue to want to be here and to locate here. So this evening, what we would like to do is to recognize two special volunteers that are here with us this evening. We have Mr. Ed Brown. Mr. Brown has served on our Planning Commission for 29 years, I believe, and we have a special recognition we want to provide. And Mr. Earl Hagan, who also served on our Board of Review. Those of you that aren't familiar with the Board of Review, it's, you know, if you have a problem with your property taxes, you go and see the Board of Review. If you have a problem with, you know, wanting to build something, you come to our Planning Commission, and I believe you may have been served on the zoning board review in the past, or ZBA. So not always fun committees to be on, because not everybody that comes to see you is pleased. And so we appreciate all the service that you've given. So with that, let me grab the plaques, and Mr. Brown, we'll have you come up first.
Where would you like me to be?
Right there. So if you'd like...
Let me grab this here real quick. We have a nice little plaque here to give you this evening, and it's from Grand Blank Township, presented to Mr. Ed Brown in appreciation for your 19 years of service and dedication to Grand Blank Township, dated July 13th, 2021.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Brown?
I've only got maybe 35, 40 minutes.
You've got to keep it... Three minutes or less.
Oh, yes. I better read fast. Thank you so much. I'm just delighted, and thank you for recognizing me. It's been a great ride here being in the township. A little bit of background, I frankly didn't even know where the township offices were for many years, and I'd been in the community a long time. And a good friend of mine, who's a former treasurer here at the township, Jeff Seifert, said, "Ed, have you ever thought about being on a board here?" And I went, "Nope. No interest." Then he continued to talk to me a little bit more. The next thing I know, I was talking with other folks, and I ended up on a board. And so that's how this second career, because I... My real career was in the private sector, and I'd retired from that and thought I was going to play golf every day. However, I found that being on the boards have been... Has been extremely rewarding to me. I've met so many great people, Scott obviously being one of them, but all the folks back here, Maria and Dan and Vince, they've really turned out to be my great friends. They're smart. We worked well together in the Planning Commission, and I think we made a lot of things happen. So I'm very happy with that. And I can't forget David, Mr. Laddie, for the township attorney. I mean, he's provided us very sage and good advice when it comes to zoning Board of Appeals things, which tend to be a little hairy from time to time. And David came through and got us on the right track, so thank you as well.
Can you have Dolores back there, hiding in the corner?
And Dolores, yes. I'm sorry. I didn't want to forget Dolores, yes. And she's been great. They're great friends here, and I really appreciate it. I guess one of the things that I like to think is when we've done these projects for the community, that all of us in the Planning Commission really have our thumbprints on these developments, because I think we're really good. I mean, that sounds kind of arrogant, but it's not. I mean, I think the talent that we have here has led us to get things done. And the last big project that I had any input on was Elga Credit Union. And for those of you who may not know where this is, the credit union is over on Hill Road. I guess it used to be called... What Parkway would that be called now? The old GM Parkway?
Grand Point.
Grand Point, okay. Well, it's, you know, it's under construction. The first branch is open, and the headquarters is right behind it, and lots are going on there. And I think that you folks will be proud of how nice it looks. I'm very proud of it, and I can tell you, I think my colleagues are as well. And Maria, I never can forget Maria. She's my distant cousin, and she said, "I want to remain distant." And she's been great with me as well, so I wanted to... And, well, by the way, as well as Amy, and both of them have said openly, Ed Brown couldn't find the front door if we didn't help him. So I'm really proud of a lot of those things, and I appreciate your recognize me. It's been fun. I've learned a lot. Being a Planning Commissioner has really enlightened me, and I really appreciate that. One of the things that we did a number of years ago, when I first became on the Planning Commission, we... The Board of Trustees were kind enough to fund two or three of the members to go to the Michigan Association of Planners Conference, annual conference that's held around the state each year. And I can tell you that I know Dan and I have been there a couple of times together, and some of the other folks, and you get a chance to interact with other communities, and you find out how they do things, and sometimes you come up with some good ideas that they share with us as well. And I think that was really great, and I hope this board, if there is funding available, would consider sending one or two of the current Planning Commissioners to the annual conference, because I think it's a great way to sharpen your skills and learn much more from other folks. And so that's really all I have, but I thank you. I love being here. I can't believe it's 19 years.
Actually, Ms. Hobson has something she would like to present to you.
Uh-oh.
It's actually Maria Brown. There's a couple of Riots here. Maria Brown. You said Hobson. It's all right.
Miss spoke, Mr. Hobson.
So, you know, he always jokes because we have the same last name, and so he'll always call me, and he'll say, "It's Cousin Eddie," and of course, I get such a kickback, because I think of the Griswold family vacation, and Cousin Eddie was a walking disaster, which you are the opposite. You are a rock. You are a treasure, Ed Brown.
Thank you.
And I, from the bottom of my heart, just appreciate you, and I'm going to miss you terribly.
I miss everybody here.
And as for fun, I have memorialized a site point of view application, a zoning Board of Appeal application, a special lane choose application.
Oh.
So you can hang it in your den, or you can fling it out into the backyard, whatever you decide to do.
It'll be in my office.
And of course...
Oh, my name plaque.
And I hope that gets a nice, proud spot on your mantel at home.
Thank you so much.
And please let Mrs. Brown know how much I...
I will. She wished she could have been here tonight.
...appreciate her taking all my early morning phone calls, a 7:00 a.m. I'd be like, "Don't forget you have a site point of view meeting." She's like, "He's getting ready. He's in the shower, late night ones." "Don't forget he's got a site point of view," or your dinners that I would interrupt. So from the bottom of our heart...
No, you're... Thank you so much.
...you are a treasure, and we are going to miss you, too.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, cousin.
Mwah.
Oh.
Cousin Eddie.
And Mr. Bandursky's a... Mr. Bandursky, being a retired engineer, every week I get an email from him saying, "You need a new Corvette." I tell my wife, and she says, "You got one, and that's all you're getting." So I'm done. But it's been an honor to represent the township. I'll never forget it, and I won't forget where this place is anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next gentleman, Mr. Hagan. I first knew him by, you know, the guy with the five beautiful daughters. But I've told him that numerous times, and he gets a little bit of a chuckle. But come on up, Mr. Hagan. And Mr. Hagan had a birthday this week as well, right? Or this past... A couple days ago?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
You turned 50 again, right?
Oh, 71.
71? Oh. But Mr. Hagan golfs. Yeah, 92, I heard?
92.
That is phenomenal. And you golf every day that you can?
Yeah, a couple of times a week.
And even when it's raining?
Even... It never rains in a golf course.
I like that. And you have your family here with you?
Yes, I do.
Who do you have here with you, Mr. Hagan?
My wife, Margot, my daughter Linda and Maureen, my granddaughter Sophia, my grandson Marco, and my brother-in-law, Greg Elliott. And those people came to support me. And I'd just like to tell you, for 18 years, I served on here. It's been an honor, and I love serving the township. In fact, prior to that, I served approximately seven or eight years on the zoning Board of Review, or zoning Board of Appeals. So it's been fun. I enjoyed every minute of it, every year of it. And I'd like to leave the crowd here with a... Especially the board, Scott and David and Joe. I'd like to leave you with a story. It's a true story.
And you want to leave with Paul and...
Yes, Mark and Jude. These are the guys, and Paul, yes, Paul, and our attorney, David Laddie, and Dennis Lamont, the superintendent. Dennis, I remember the squab we had a couple of years ago. It was on a sewer issue. Anyway, I can't remember. But I'll try to tell you the story on... That is, I consider a phenomenon. It is one that we can certainly look back on. As you know, in March, we always serve the second week of the month, and March has been one of the coldest months in the year. In fact, the coldest was last March. In fact, it was so cold, politicians had their hands in their own pockets. With that, I'll leave that with you.
So maybe Paul and Mark and Jude want to be left out of that one.
Read the plaques, guys.
So anyways, we have... And I'm beginning to wonder if we have the dates transposed on these plaques. But anyways, it says, "From Grand Blank Township," and we've got a new logo on there, if you guys didn't notice. But it says, "Presented to Mr. Earl Hagan in appreciation for your 28 years of service and dedication to Grand Blank Township, July 13th, 2021." So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hagan, Mr. Hagan, Mr. Hagan, let's get one picture over here, too.
All right.
Mr. Bandursky's going to take one for us. Okay, all right, good night.
We have some cupcakes over here and dessert. If we want to take... Yeah. I don't know, do you want to do that right now? You want to stand at ease for a few minutes, Mr. Shapiro? Let's stand at ease for five, 10 minutes. Everybody grab a cupcake, and the family members that want to stick around, you're welcome to, or friends. Otherwise, you'll be free to leave at this time. So we'll take about a seven-minute break, and feel free to grab a cupcake, and let's have a few words with our honored guests that we're recognizing this evening. Very good.
Okay, we would ask, Mr. Kilmer?
Board members.
I would like to convene the meeting back to order, and at this time, we'll have a special presentation. We have with us this evening from Rose Puss Solutions, Mark Lucero, and he's going to give us an update, introduce us to a new associate that's going to be taking over Grand Blank Township. Good evening, Mr. Lucero.
Good evening. How are we doing tonight, board?
Good. How are you?
Pretty good. I don't think I can follow those two acts, but we'll do our best.
If you can take care of the mosquitoes, we will move you up.
Well, yeah. Well, that's the hinge pin right there, isn't it? So I see a lot of new faces. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Mark Lucero. I'm the district supervisor for Rose out of the Saginaw office. We like to come in here probably a couple times a year. Usually, right now, in July, we come in, we give our mid-season update. It's usually just a quick update, what's going on, what we're seeing, what we could use you guys' help with, if you guys have any questions for us. The end of the season one, we do in October, a little more involved, a little bit more stats. We give you guys all your reports. I give each of the board members a report to look at. So today's going to be a little different. Usually, I would be doing that, but I'm stepping down. This is Ashley Warner. She's been with us for seven years now. She actually started the same place I did. She started in the mosquito program as a mosquito technician. She did that for about four years until she graduated college. She then got promoted to a full-time route technician with us. She did that for a couple of years, and now she's been promoted to a training supervisor, which fortunately or unfortunately comes along with dealing with the mosquito programs. So it started off being fortunate, and maybe now not so fortunate. But she's going to give you an update this year, and I think you guys are in good hands with her.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Good evening.
Hi. I'm a little nervous. I get a little spooked talking to people.
You're amongst friends here. Anybody that's getting rid of mosquitoes is a friend of ours.
Right. I appreciate you having me. I wanted to start with an update on how the weather's been. It usually defines our entire season. So in the beginning of the season, we were in a statewide drought. Everyone was having issues keeping their grass green. But with over the last three weeks, we've had a ton of rainfall, and that's what's causing a lot of our issues now with the bloom of mosquitoes. In the beginning of the season, the dry conditions will limit the breeding possibilities for mosquitoes. And so we would... Still won't go through our spring larvicide priority areas, but we were finding that a lot of the swamps that were, you know, knee-high in water were completely dried up already this year. So we still began larviciding on April 19th in the areas where we were finding water. We treated all the township catch basins with brick larvicide at the beginning of the season. These will last all season long. And then again, with the recent rainfall, we want to encourage the container issue with residents, making sure that residents understand that after heavy rains like this, wheelbarrows, kiddie pools, buckets, things of that sort, cause a big issue for breeding mosquitoes on top of the floodwaters. And so we always want to try and, you know, update on social media when we can, you know, just pushing to get that stuff dumped out. And then, of course, our technicians are looking for it when we go to a property. They'll look around and see if they find any man-made issues. So the mosquitoes that we're dealing with mostly right now are container mosquitoes, summer flood mosquitoes. Mosquitoes lay eggs in standing water, but they're also known to lay eggs in areas that could potentially be wet. And so since we had such dry conditions, we've had tons of eggs laying dormant that got wet recently. So we had up to nine months' worth of eggs hatch over the last week or two. So that's where the bloom has come from. So the technicians are out there working diligently in the priority areas again. We've gone through them all over again. As of July 1st, that's when things really took off, because we had all that rain, and then a nice warm weekend, and it only took four or five days for everything to mature. As of now, we have applied over 1,400 pounds of larvicide. We've continued performing the adulticide treatments, the fogging with the backpack or the truck as needed when the property allows or the weather allows. Due to the spike in calls, last week in 1A and 6D, I did initiate a treatment of those areas with the truck last Friday. We have also been placing our barrier treatments down. We have performed 210 to date this season. Calls are coming in later into the season than normal, but we have 554 to date with 270 coming just in July alone. Currently, we have 287 to address. All the New Jersey Light Traps have had relatively low counts. Obviously, they're going to take off again here shortly, and so we're going to be monitoring that. All the West Nile testing that we have done to date is all comeback negative. And as always, if any residents are experiencing any issues, encourage them to call us, send in the paperwork, so we can get them on our list and on our regular schedule. So far, we've put in a little over 1,100 hours in the township. We've received 575 calls. We've used 1,520 pounds of larvicide, and we've adultacided with 58 gallons, and we've done the 210 barriers. So these last stats were a little updated as of this afternoon. And that is all I have for you.
Could you explain what the barriers are? I'm not familiar with that.
So the barrier treatments are a treatment that if we go out to the property and inspect and find that there's an adult mosquito problem, and there's a wood line or foliage that's non-flowering, we're able to put a residual barrier treatment down. And what that is, is it's like a misting that goes onto the leaves, and once it dries, anytime mosquitoes rest, they're going to pick it up, take it away, and it's going to take care of them that way. So it's almost like 30 days round the clock, working at the adult population. And versus with the adulticide, it's just like a giant fly swatter. It gets what's up, and then it's gone. So the barrier is a better treatment, and that's why we like that you guys include them in your program, because we can, you know, help contain it through individual properties.
So the adulticide and the bricks that you place, like in swampy areas or in sewers or what have you, I imagine with the more rain... or what have you, um, I imagine with the more rain, those get diluted and then you have to go out and replace them, right?
Um, the bricks should be fine all season, but the granular larvicide, that's something we have to update every three weeks. And if the, the size of the water increases, so that's why we also have to stay on top of how much rainfall we receive. If it, you know, was a puddle five foot wide and now it's, you know, half an acre, then we would also have to reapply, yes.
I've got to imagine, and we'll hear from our DPW department in a little bit, but I've got to imagine our rainfall has been, uh, much higher than, than usual years so far in the last few weeks even.
Yeah, yep. It's definitely causing an issue out there, but it's statewide, so.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Fike?
Thank you. The larvicide that you put out. What's in it? Could it be harmful to people or other animals or other plants?
So the active ingredient in Altacid, which I have the label, if you, if you would want it, um, is methoprine. It's super microscopic quantities that we're, that we're putting out in there, so, um, an animal would have to ingest the undiluted state, tons and tons of it to be harmed by it. But again, if you ever wanted to see our safety data sheet or, um, our label, we have, I have both of those here, I could leave with you.
But it doesn't impact the bees or the?
No, so it's, so what the larvicide actually is, is it's just basically causing the larva to stay larva. That's why we have to come around every three weeks because that's when it wears off. So it keeps the hormone in their body that, that, um, keeps them in a larval state and kind of tricks them into not emerging into adults. So it doesn't actually kill the larva unless the water dries up. The water dries up, they, they die from not having the water, but, um, it just is kind of, it's a insect growth regulator is what it actually is called.
And you have traps, I forget how many traps there are around the township, and I'm just recounting some of this for some of the new board members, but we have traps.
Yep, we have fourteen.
Fourteen traps.
Throughout the area, or throughout the whole township, yep.
Might explain how that works a little bit for some of them as well.
So the, the light traps, um, we check those Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're an attractant, they have a fan that pulls them down in. And then we count the female mosquito population Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. If it reaches over twenty mosquitoes captured in one cycle, um, so like between Monday and Wednesday, if it's over more than twenty mosquitoes, we would initiate a fog in the area because it's showing that the population is growing, um, to a, a level we don't want it to be at. And then that's also, those same samples are what we test from in, in our office for West Nile.
One more. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You want to go ahead? Kilmer?
Yeah, I, I. What happens, does this have any effect at all on bees? I mean, I know those are a threatened population, too.
Yeah, so our, our adulticide, the control that we, we fog with, it can have an effect on bees, and that's why we're very careful about drift. If we're fogging, we want to make sure that we know if there's honeybees in the area, and we, that's another reason we do it at night, is because they should be back in the nest and we shouldn't be getting them while they're up and flying. And then as for the barrier treatment, um, we, that's why we don't apply it to anything flowering, because we don't want them picking it up by visiting the flowers. So we focus on, um, you know, tree lines, wood lines, bushes that have no type of budding whatsoever, so that way they don't interact with it.
And if a resident has an issue, can they call you, or how does that work?
Absolutely, they can call our office, there's, um, two forms on the township website that they can submit. Uh, one of them is for shut-off or notification if they want us to not fog in their property when we come through and do the area, they can, um, do that. Or they can, um, ask to be notified when we're going to fog in the area, like get a phone call that day saying we're planning to fog tonight. So there's a few different ways they can interact with us.
And can we assume that if you don't fill out the form, then you would fog the area?
Um, in the individual property or the area, so if, um, if I initiated a fog of the streets, yeah, we're gonna do the whole area minus anybody that has requested to be a shut-off. But we only do that if the trap counts get too high or if I notice a spike in calls, like which I did last week, 1A, 6D had a spike in calls, so I thought we should fog those areas. So yeah, if we initiate a fog with the truck, we will do the whole, all the streets in the area unless they're a shut-off.
You know, your phone's gonna ring tomorrow morning if everybody's here tonight.
That's okay. That's what we're here for.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just want to add a couple things real quick.
Sure.
Ken, just based upon the questions that were asked. So with you asking about the, the forms to fill out and the residents calling in, we've had a couple of people, and it's usually due to people moving into the township that aren't familiar with the program or any program for that matter, um, they kind of get upset, and the reason we did, the reason I'm bringing this up is we just had somebody kind of blast us on social media for it. They were a little irritated that they had to call every time they wanted treatment. And the reason we do that is legality reasons. We can lose our license for chemical trespassing if we just go on somebody's property and start doing anything on there. We have to have permission. I have to have permission through those forms yearly because if you move, I might have permission this year and next year I go, well, Joel's got a big old swamp behind his house, I'm gonna go back there this year, but you don't live there no more. I now lose my license and get sued. Um, so just touching on that a little bit. Uh, a lot of the calls she's referring to do come from your bordering roads. And the reason that is, is okay, you guys have a program and you see how many mosquitoes are out there. Imagine with no program, like in Monday Township right now. So the mosquitoes don't know not to cross Fenton Road, you know what I mean? So I know there's some swamps on Fenton Road on the other side that will easily cause an issue for everything on the east side over there. So that's where a lot of them calls are coming from, so we kind of got to battle that a little bit. And you asking about the bees, uh, so I don't think anybody has been here longer than fourteen, fifteen years, have they?
I'm not admitting that.
Okay. So back before we had the program, the, the idea of the program was to just drive the truck around and spray as much chemicals possible everywhere. And the reason we actually got involved is because what the township was looking for was a more environmentally friendly program. They wanted something that stopped the use of chemicals as much as we could possibly do. Right, so that's why we are a larvicide-heavy program. We don't want to be out there just spraying to spray. Right, we want to make sure that that is a last-ditch effort so that we can put a band-aid on it, so we call it the giant fly swatter. It only lasts for that night. It doesn't have any residual effect, it doesn't do anything after that night. So we're using that to gain control back after we've lost it. So we, our goal is to not lose it. And that's why we use the barriers, which like Ashley said, is a residual. That, that's like us having technicians out for thirty to forty-five days all the time. Right, so that helps us out. Unfortunately, that does come with the bees. So we do have pollinator protection that we follow to make sure that we're limiting that as much as possible. So that's why we stick with the larvicide to be a little more heavy on that.
I've got a butterfly hummingbird garden in my yard, and you guys come out to, uh...
We wouldn't even touch it.
I've got woods behind me, and you come out and it doesn't harm?
Yep.
Any of those pollinators at all from what I can see?
Yep, we actually have a pretty good stewardship, so basically, there's no law right now that states we can't kill bees. There is no law. It's a stewardship, so basically, we agree to work with you. We agree to work with being a pollinator protector, right? So we know what'll harm bees and what won't. All our technicians go through a training, they go, everything is learned about pollinator protection and what will do harm to a bee and what won't. So anything that blooms will not get touched, even if you ask for it, we try not to touch it.
I have a lot of experience, my degree is in conservation biology, so that's on the top of my list.
I've got to say that the people that I've seen in the field that have come out to my home are very conscientious and, uh, to a, to an extreme, and, uh, I don't know where you find your people to hire them, but...
It's tough, trust me, it's tough.
The people that...
Especially knowing it's seasonal, it's tough.
They're very detailed and, uh, very conscientious, I can tell you that.
And we put a lot into training, so it definitely helps out, because we have, I mean, obviously, the residents are our clients, too, but ultimately, the township is our client, so we get people that are like, I don't care about the bees, I want you to spray all my landscaping. Well, we don't do that, morally, we're just not gonna do it. We'll treat where we can treat and where it's efficient.
So, well, any other questions? Okay, thank you both very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck out there. We want you to be successful.
See you guys knocked over.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion by trustee Fike, support by, uh, Mr., by trustee White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we will move on to first item under new business, and the board will consider a motion for approval of the Kursley Creek Interceptor Project. We have, uh, Director Sears with us this evening. Director Sears, I guess before we get into too much of that, I, I would guess that the rainfall lately has been kind of a record year, or?
Yeah, well, I don't know about records.
Okay.
But I know June and July, we've had almost eight inches of rain so far this year. It's a lot of rain. We haven't had too many issues, obviously, we've had power outage issues. Last week was a very busy week for us, right before Fourth of July, but, um, we, we survived and everything's back up and running as of right now, so.
Okay. I know a few sump pumps that failed in my neighborhood.
Yeah, we've gotten, uh, we, we've, we had a few calls on sump pumps also, unfortunately. You know, it's homeownership, I guess.
Right, okay, well, glad our sewer, our stormwater system's working well.
Yes, it is.
So how are we on the Kursley Creek Interceptor Project?
So you've had several presentations so far on the different options for sewer projects, uh, moving forward. We know, we know that one thing we can't do is, is do nothing. Uh, there's several projects that we could undertake. Superintendent Limida included in the packet a very detailed memo for you on what those different options were. We discussed our involvement in the KCI Sewer Interceptor Project with a estimated cost around nine-point-three million. And then we discussed our District Six and Eleven and our Slack Lake sewer projects with the estimated cost around fourteen million dollars and what the impacts of all those projects would have. Previously, we answered questions on how the board should move forward, and I believe in Superintendent Limida's memo, uh, tonight, we're asking for, uh, some kind of direction on which way you'd want to go. He may have more to add to that.
I think that you guys have had the opportunity, we wanted to give you more time after you heard, uh, the Drain Commissioner's presentation, heard Mr. Sears' presentation, and then we still waited, uh, to give you another thirty days so that you had an opportunity if there was any other questions we could answer. You're not required, if you still needed more information, we can certainly provide more information at this time, but I think the Genesee County Drain Commissioners, you know, Waterway Services Division is looking to see if Grand Lake Township, and if you recalled during the presentation, we talked about it, if Grand Lake Township is not going to participate, uh, this project's not moving forward. So you're not being asked to allocate funds at this time or anything else, it's just voice and support for the project, and if the board is in support of it versus the alternative that was presented, uh, we can let them know and then they'll start work on that project and it'll be back before you, before, uh, it starts awarding bids or setting aside cash or doing anything.
Yeah, and as Dennis said, we're, there, there's no, um, financial commitment at this time, there's still agreements that have to be drawn up, there's still design work that has to be drawn up, and there's still bidding that has to happen. What we have so far from the Drain Commission is an estimate of nine-point-three million. Before anything gets awarded or this project moves forward, it'll come back to this board for further approval.
As I pointed out in my memo, too, the American Recovery Plan Act funds, and I did submit our application to the State Treasurer's Office last Friday, uh, we have just slightly over three-point-eight million dollars that we're eligible for. They should release that, uh, first fifty percent of that sometime in the next thirty days, uh, but we have until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four to utilize those funds. These are the kind of projects, these infrastructure projects that are one-hundred percent eligible for use of those ARPA funds. The county also has about a hundred million dollars. Uh, I've heard that it was about fifteen million that they were going to make available for, uh, all of the municipalities within the county. We've, I've already sent a letter and will make the argument, continue to make the argument that, um, there's a tremendous return on investment if they utilize some of their ARPA funds to combine with us to pay for our portion of, uh, the Kursley Creek Interceptor Project because of the, just the amount of, uh, commercial growth that we will experience in that south end of the township. And this has been on the books since two thousand and four, so it's not something we cooked up to, to try to tap those funds, it's been noted that it was a necessary, uh, project since two thousand and four.
Any thoughts on the project, Mr. Rirdan?
So, i-if we just say, go ahead with it, that, I mean, we're just giving tentative approval.
Correct.
And would this help with, uh, any proposed development that's coming in? I mean, is it something?
You know, we've clearly, we, we have to address the situation one way or another, it's been in our CIP documents for a long time. Uh, anybody that we talk to is aware of the fact that we tell them that we can build out the system before they ever need the capacity, uh, but if we've committed and we're moving forward, um, obviously, that, that changes our narrative a little bit in our marketing materials when we're talking from an economic development standpoint.
Well, i-i-is this a vote on anything or is this just a consensus? Scott?
We want a motion, I think that, so, that way we can send it to the county.
Yeah, Mr. Fike, any thoughts?
No, I'd like to make the motion to proceed.
Uh, feel free. You, you care to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Supported by, uh, trustee Rirdan?
Supported by trustee Rirdan.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I, uh, just, uh, I know, um, I know Mr. White had some concerns a couple of weeks ago, that I think they're legitimate concerns, that, you know, we want to make sure that we're developing, uh, Grand Lake Township. Unfortunately, um, the alternative would really, um, cause much disruption, um, through the neighborhoods and, um, I, I know, we, we've seen some disruptions even with some of the road projects we have right now with the roundabout at Embry and, um, I think that would be minor compared to, uh, a years-long, several-year-long project being, digging up fifty feet away from people's houses, um, and I have seen similar-type projects and it's, it's not pretty. So based on that and the need for the, the, uh, project to be able to develop any further development within our township, I, if it helps somebody else, then I guess we just need to do a better job of attracting them to our township if, uh, somebody else has cheaper property than us, but I think we have a lot of other services. The other factor, I think, that Mr. Limida will remind us of, and you as well, Mr. Sears, is that they don't have water in those areas. They may, they may gain some sewer, but, uh, they're not going to get water and, and we have had other municipalities ask us to share water. Uh, we're not in any position to be able to do that from my understanding, due to our capacity issues and, uh, what we're going to, our expected growth, so that would limit other areas' growth that, uh, are outside of our municipality. So I would be in favor of it. Any other discussion? Anybody have any thoughts? Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, very good, we'll look forward to, uh, the next steps of this project. Item B, the board will consider a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four strategic plan. And you have before you that Mr. Limida has organized, uh, our work into a packet that we presented online as well in our packet. Has a number of goals. This obviously is gonna be a living document, I know that's kind of a cliche, but, uh, it is gonna be a document that we are working through and we can make amendments as we go along. And obviously, um, you know, some of these things as far as the threats and opportunities, some of those things may change over time as well. But the goal areas and the, uh, the details of how we're going to accomplish these, we're going to be establishing a number of committees. Just to briefly, for the public that may not have looked at this, there's a few, uh, main headlines that, uh... This involves some major goal areas, one is infrastructure, and the key objectives for that, um, I don't know how much detail we want to go into, but goal area one, and they're not in any priority order, infrastructure, which includes IT upgrades, DPW facility, new fire station, um, sidewalks along Hill Road, and paying down, uh, post-employment benefits or pension funding. And so, uh, those are the goals of area, goal area one, which would be labeled infrastructure. Goal area two, which would be community vitality, would include paying some attention to the, our, kind of our miniature downtown or small downtown here, which is our north end of the township, going from, uh, Hill Road North to Maple. And, um, I believe it's probably all three, uh, major thoroughfares, whether it's Fenton Road, Saginaw Street, and Dort Highway, that, uh, we'd be looking at there. Also, under Garrett Goal, area two, community vitality, we'd be looking at enhanced code enforcement efforts, also high-quality housing, also, uh, ensuring that rental housing is in good shape, and then also... And then also looking at how we can help Tech Village and Ascension, Genesis Campus to be further developed. Goal area three, which would be community connectiveness and identity, would involve things like branding entrances to our township, maintenance and improvements in the parks, and basically making Grand Blank Township distinguishable from surrounding communities and improving the quality of life for residents. So those are the three main goal areas. Mr. Limada, any thoughts? I know you helped assemble this into a document.
It's what we tried to capture from the May 17th meeting, the Supervisor Board of Trustees, myself and department heads. We spent the day and, and really narrowed it down to these goal areas and some key objectives. After that, the department heads, we've started working on it. And I have to give a tremendous amount of credit to the department heads. Whether it involved their department or not, they broke into smaller groups and attacked these to kind of get a feel. And I, you know, I've shared several times with the previous board and with this board about how impressed I am always with, with the department heads that we have in Grand Blank Township and their ability to come together, whether it was to move the fire department over after the split of the joint department from the city or bringing Parks and Recreation into in-house here. The department heads come together, they, they work as one great team, and everybody adds information and, and really thinks through this. That's what they did with these grids. The grids are designed to show the board kind of the who, what, where, why, when aspects. You look at the top, you see the goal area, the infrastructure, like the first one with IT upgrades. The key objective is that we have a plan in place to update IT infrastructure along with off-site backup. The what is obvious. The key thing is strategies below those or, or as part of those are tactics. Not a lot of the costs have been baked in yet. Our goal today was to see if the, if we had captured the essence of where the board wanted us to go from as far as a goal standpoint and the key objectives that we got this right. If there's changes that you want to make or you think we missed it in some fashion, we'd be happy to do that. What we'll do then is start to take this out. We'll fill in more of the responsibility. There will be some committees that will need to be formed and populated with board members who will need to act in those committees to provide direction. We'll start putting those target dates together. Again, this initial strategic plan upon adoption is our key, is to work on the year-one tactics. We would suggest that we'll meet again in January. You'll get updates every month. I would suggest pulling one or two of these to discuss on each agenda, just to provide a brief update. And then we meet in January, review them again. We meet next July and we talk about what are the year-two or year-three tactics. We can change it at any time if we find out, as we start to flesh this out. For example, one of the key areas that the board was concerned with had to do with code enforcement. There's a lot of ways for code enforcement to work. We're going to be coming back and asking the board to define how proactive you want to be. You know that we've been more reactive to code enforcement, responding to complaints versus proactive. That could mean a lot of things, including the addition of a full-time code enforcement person. We just found out this week that one of our code enforcement officers is going to be moving from the area. So we lost somebody and, and that's a concern. So we're going to be having to fill a position relatively quick here in order to keep our code enforcement standards at least where they are today. But if you guys want us to be much more proactive, it, we'll boil that down as to how far you want us to be. And, you know, that would require, at the very least, if we're going to be more proactive, the addition of one full-time additional code enforcement person. We'll need clerical assistance within the office to follow up with all of the letters that go back and forth and the tracking. And then maybe the utilization of one or two additional, you know, part-time people, you know, to make it run. Right now, we have Amy and then we have, who's very phenomenal at what she does. She primarily focuses on more of the weed control in the summer, the signs year-round. But she'll go anywhere that she needs to be. She's phenomenal in, in what she does. Steve Hatfield, that's been our part-time, 25-hour-a-week guy, phenomenal. He's ex-law enforcement. We love that ex-law enforcement because they bring something to the team where sometimes you have a more difficult issue to address. Ex-law enforcement kind of has that personality where they know how to work through some of those issues and work very well with residents to get things done. Again, we're not looking to raise fees by doing this. We're trying to get voluntary compliance for the most part. That's how we approach it, try to give people alternatives. But as we start to flesh things out like this, for example, you know, we're going to bring this and we'll show you these sheets, okay? Here's kind of the direction we're heading in. Do you guys support that? Would you support if it's going to cost you an additional $100,000 in labor costs? Or is there other priorities that are more important than that moving forward? So those are some of the things we'll bring you as we work through the year-one tasks. And then once we know where it is that the board as a whole wants to provide us the direction, then we start carrying these out. These sheets will get a lot longer than they are now, but we'll also be able to check some boxes as we complete it and move forward. We hope we've identified the goals. We're starting on budget fiscal year 2022. One of the big driving factors then becomes this is your strategic plan. These are the three goal areas and the number of key objectives that you told us was important. We will develop a budget for 2022 based upon what you told us that the board wants us to accomplish over the next three to five years.
I'm looking at the, so goal area of infrastructure, new department, public service facilities, and fire. You know, and you can see we're step by step, you know, what, how that would work. But first of all, establish funding for design, you know, establish overall estimated budget, budget amendments if necessary. So I mean, it looks like, I know a lot of thought has gone into each of these things. And I don't think you'd be any more detailed. I think that one of the things this helps the board to do, and, and we talked about this in the strategic planning as well as prior to it, was that, you know, the board wants to move on beyond just approving, you know, the purchase of pickup trucks and police cars. And by having a plan like this, we certainly are going to be looking long-term and being able to plan out the next three years what we want to accomplish. And not only just having the, the big picture in mind, but we're also going to know that all the, the smaller details are being covered by staff with input from board members in the various areas. So I think it's very well done, Mr. Limada. And I look forward to getting going on, on the plan itself. So I don't know what others' thoughts are, but I think it's a great roadmap for where we want to go. And obviously, things change as we go along. But I think, you know, it's the first time I've ever seen us have this detailed of a plan of what we want to accomplish and how we're going to get there. Mr. Reardon?
No, I, I agree.
Can we put this on the township website? I, I'm, I'm in the packet, I know, but it's like a separate thing for people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we probably can even come up with a way to detail a little bit for them. They probably can figure it out what, what it means, but there might be some ways we can explain it even more, so.
One of the suggestions I'll have, I mean, I'm a geek about strategic planning. I've been working on it for several decades. I created this form about a dozen years ago and have used it since then because I like the, putting people's names on there, the accountability and the timeframe saying, this is when we're going to get this done. And then if we're not going to get it done by that timeframe, we need to come to the board and say, we're going to have to revise this, here's why we failed, we're behind schedule, and we need to, you know, put more resources back here. But it holds us accountable to you guys. And there's another quicker form, just kind of a red, green, yellow sort of, you know, we're on track, we're off track, we're, you know, slightly off track, whatever, that we can list these and it would be good for the website too. Somebody looks and says, where are you at? And you've got them listed and you got it color-coded like on track, you know, slightly off track, you know, stopped or off track completely. Just a really quick snapshot of, man, here's we are. Said every month, we want to bring something back to you so that you guys get a chance to hear from our guys what we've accomplished, where we're going. And if we ever, if you feel like we're getting off track, that's the beauty of this thing is from the board is to be able to say, whoa, 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 you know, I'm looking at your, your strategies here and it looks to me like you're building a new fire station already next year. We haven't even talked about where the funding's coming from or how that's being financed yet. You know, we need a little bit more detail on this. That's why I like the reporting format because you get to slow us down if we start galloping off in the wrong direction. I think you'll, it's kind of why we've been pushing for this, is that it really helps us as a, as an administrative team focus. And that's why I said, important for me to see if you guys want to make the motion to adopt this tonight because then it means we've captured the right goals, we've captured the key objectives that you asked us to accomplish. Can be adjusted anytime, living, breathing document. We're going to review it at least every six months. We might accomplish some of these goals, check the box, get rid of it, and add a new one. I do appreciate, I mean, taking a big commitment on your part, spending the time doing what you guys did to get ready for this and to, to give us your thoughts. But I couldn't be prouder of the department. I will call out Jeff Sears especially, I, I, just the way he embraced and, and worked through this project was just phenomenal. I mean, just phenomenal.
And the, I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. White, too, as far as on the website. And we just so happened to have Melissa Roberts, who's, I think, one of the people taking the lead on the website here with us this evening, so I'm sure she heard that. And I think it would be great to have an area on the website that people, you know, residents, business owners, potential investors in our community can go to to say, you know, what's going on in the township? And they can look at this, you know, and anybody asks any board member, hey, what's going on in the township? Have you been to our strategic planning, you know, on our, on our website yet? No, well, hey, take a look at it and we'll tell you where we're at to date on a whole bunch of different things. And I think it'd be a very good way to communicate with the public that where we're at on a, on a variety of issues. So, yes, Mr. Reardon?
Number one, I would like to make a motion that we approve this. But, you know, I, I want to say that I'm, I'm impressed with Ron, Jeff, Pat, Patrick, and Bob. Because these folks, they come to these meetings all the time. And, you know, you talk about strategic planning, you know, these are the guys that are going to be the drivers here. And so I want you to know that I'm really impressed that you guys, you know, almost every meeting show up, so.
I, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Reardon. I, I think we have phenomenal department heads. Mr. Limada's been hiring some new department heads to, to fill some vacancies and also some employees. And I have to say, as difficult as it is to, to find any employees these days, the people that we're bringing in new too are phenomenal individuals. And I think as you get to meet them, you'll, you'll agree. We met our assessing director, I think, last meeting, and I think everybody was very impressed with Dulce. And I know I've had the opportunity to meet with her a few times here in the office. And I know the staff here, our assessing staff is just delighted to, to have her. But our department heads do a phenomenal job. And I, I agree that a plan like this helps the communication level between the board and our department heads. And that's, that's important because they need to know that they're on the right track with, with where the board wants things to go. And then Mr. Limada, obviously, will have this document to, to show that, hey, here's where we need to be.
Absolutely.
I think it's going to work great for everyone. So, okay, so Mr. Reardon made the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, support by Clerk Robertson? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, very good. So we expect all those things on the list to start tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll probably wrap this up in a week and.
End of the next.
I'll be checking in with you daily on that.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm glad, I think we captured it right, but like I said, it wasn't for the team that I have behind me, this, this document doesn't exist the way it looks like right now.
Yeah. And I, I want to take a minute too and just say, well, that I appreciated the compliments that Ms. Shapiro was paying me for the efforts on the, the pathway, but it really is a, a team effort. I'm just one spoke in the wheel. And this board, our staff and Mr. Limada are, are really, you know, the true heroes of getting these projects done. It, I do have an interest and I know Mr. Limada shares that with pathways. And I'm glad that we're able to get it done as a group. So I just want to make sure I mention that. But the, the next item on the agenda, item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the full-time position of deputy fire chief. You had in your packet the job description, Mr. Limada?
Yes, so part of our reorganization, and you know, we embarked on this in January of this year and, and have been updating the board regularly. We made some changes in, in a lot of departments and worked through, obviously, some big changes in our IT department. And with a request will be coming back to you later this month or early August. And we've been using a contract employee to help us reorganize that department. And he has worked out very well and I'm going to ask the board to consider making him a permanent addition to our staff. But we've had some changes through, we created the Department of Public Services instead of DPW. We folded building into there and combined some positions that made more sense from being able to handle permitting and, and inspections, trying to streamline our operations. And one of the things that we talked about going all the way back was with, with the fire service. And, you know, it's been a tremendous amount of change for these guys, quite frankly, from, you know, two years ago at this time, they were a joint city township fire department. And they came in and became a township fire department. And we, in about six weeks, again, Mr. Sears, thank you, turned this into a full-time fire department with sleeping quarters, kitchen, you know, you name it. We got them incorporated in here and we told them, don't worry, we're going to be building a new fire station sometime soon down the road. Thought we'd be a little farther ahead than we are, but, you know, it, it is what it is and the guys have been really good. Now we're, we're looking through like, how do we reorganize? One of the things we recognized with Chief Burdette is all the administrative burden. Typically on departments, they have a little more help, especially a department the size of the fire department where you've got the full-time guys. And then you have the AFSMI group that are the professional paid-on-call, part-time guys who work, actually work shifts. So we're a unique department, they sign up for shifts and, and fill regular shifts every day. So there's a lot of activity from scheduling and, you know, from ordering and everything else. We have officers, we created some lieutenant's positions last year. And part of that is to help that administrative burden to spread that out a little bit. So that firefighters, there's a true, fire service is really much like police. It's a, a military-style organization, right? There should be that chain of command, there should be officers that they report to. Firefighters should know who their lieutenants are. Lieutenants go to the station captains, the captains report to a deputy chief who reports to the fire chief. The deputy chief position that we have is a part-time position. So the number two person in our fire department with 40 employees is a part-time employee. And I think that worked fine for a lot of years, but for us to move to the next, I mean, we're, because of COVID, we had to kind of separate them. We didn't have enough separation room to keep them safe. So we've been running a duty crew down at Baldwin Road Station for first and second shifts. And yet we, we, our number two guy is, is part-time. And I just think it's gotten to the point where it's unworkable. It's time that we change it and we move that to a full-time position. So we're talking about going from part-time, it is a union-represented position at this time. We're talking about creating a new position that's full-time, FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act exempt, and will not be union represented. He becomes a, a member of the management team with, with Bob. Bob will have a strong number two who's full-time and it helps off some of that administrative burden. I think it will go a long way towards, number one, freeing up Bob's from some of the more mundane activities. If somebody's got a problem right now, a firefighter, as we were trying to establish all these officers' positions and a true chain of command, somebody, a firefighter had a problem, he went to the chief. Well, that's not ideal. Chief's got a lot of other things on his plate from dealing with, you know, a, a minor issue within the fire service. So as we work through this, we've had a lot of meetings with both the AFSMI, a part-time union, and with the full-time IAFF Firefighters Union. We had a pretty lengthy meeting last night, in fact, working with Bob and his group of officers, talking more about what that chain of command looks like and how this will all. like and how this will all work. Our ask tonight is we've created a, a job description for a, uh, full-time, uh, deputy chief. It's been vetted. We've looked through it. Human Resources has gone through it. Labor, uh, attorney have, uh, approved it. And we're asking the board to authorize us to, uh, create that position. We'll come back to you if you decide that it is a good idea and you accept our recommendation. We'll have to do a budget amendment. We're going to, uh, steal some money from, uh, Ron, who has graciously offered that he doesn't have all of his positions filled. He will transfer some funds over to, uh, Chief Burdette so that Burdette could begin the search and, and fill this position. That position will come back to you then for hiring, uh, for your approval.
Yes, Mr. Rirdan.
What's the compensation or is that?
So right now, we, we've, uh, we have the position ready to post and go. Um, what we've done is done kind of a salary survey of where we need to be. It appears that for us to be competitive, uh, in the local market, we're going to probably post that position between like 69 and, uh, 79,000, somewhere in that ballpark. Uh, that would put us, uh, pretty much, give us the opportunity, the latitude, and, you know, we might have to go up to 84, but, uh, if you're going to approve it, we'll, we'll factor that in. We'll show you what we use for comparisons and then we'll, we'll, uh, create that salary range.
Is this going to be an existing member of the department or?
It could be. It's wide open. So if, if the current deputy chief wants to apply, um, that'd be fantastic. We think very highly of him, but it is a, a posting position. He is a union representative member now. He would be having to step outside of his unit to apply for an FLSA exempt position. Um,
Well, I, I guess what I'm asking is, uh, are you going to open this up to, you know, to the public?
It's wide open. Anybody could apply for the position.
Okay.
Any other thoughts from board members on position? Okay. Anybody care to make the motion? Mr. Fike?
Make a motion.
Okay. Your support? Mr. Rirdan, Dr. Rirdan makes the second on that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under new business, uh, item D, the board will review compensation for board members. I did get a message from somebody stating that, uh, that, uh, they were confused a little bit by the chart and, uh, hope that we explain it a little bit. So I know, uh, Mr. Lemata, you and, uh, Ms. Roberts, uh, put it together. Maybe you can walk us through it a little bit for the public's benefit as well.
I, um, I will tell you that I couldn't agree more with, with, uh, whoever the person was who told you they were confused by the chart in the packet, because I certainly was confused by the chart in the packet. Um, it looked like this when we put it in, but it didn't look like that when it, uh, came back out. So, uh, we printed off the copies and you all have one in front of you somewhere, um, that it kind of looks. And again, the board, uh, created the, uh, subcommittee, uh, for compensation. And we've met, uh, several times and, and had the discussion about, uh, you know, where we should go. Uh, Melissa Roberts, executive coordinator, uh, did all the legwork here and research, contacted these other places. We had a list that we had provided prior, uh, that was updated in January. She went back and made sure. We added a few at the, um, a, a, at the consideration of some board comments. And in the end, when we got it all down here and delivered, uh, we tried to make sure that we asterisked the ones that we think are most, uh, similar to Grand Blank Township, Delta Township, Meridian, Independence Township. That's based upon a very similar SEV. And then whether or not they have a, uh, council manager form of government, whether they're a full service, do they have police and fire? Um, because believe it or not, out of the 1,240 townships in the state of Michigan, there's a vast array of service delivery and how much services they deliver. So we tried to identify the ones who would be very comparable, population, SEV, and, uh, the amount of services that they delivered. We think that those were probably the closest. We did asterisk, you know, like Independence, they do, like on a supervisor salary, they do not have a manager or superintendent. Um, and then what we did over with the highlighted area onto the right-hand side, supervisor clerk, treasurer and trustees, we took it at the 90th percentile of, uh, what the, um, range was here. And we, we thought realistically, uh, at the very least, you guys are Grand Blank Township. Um, this hasn't been looked at or adjusted. And we can't even determine when the last year was, quite frankly, other than we know that they cut the supervisor salary when they went to council manager form of government. That motion occurred in December of 2007 to take effect in, in December of 2008. Uh, we don't know when any of the other positions were adjusted. Um, it's based upon, you know, the workload and it's for your consideration. Uh, we thought the board would like to take a look at it. You don't have to take an action, obviously. Uh, tonight, you may want to bounce it back to your, uh, compensation committee unless you're comfortable and you're prepared to move. But I guess our recommendation is to take a look at that 90th percentile at least and, and consider the compensation there. As to the timing of your compensation, um, I think that, uh, some of the positions clearly are woefully, uh, behind and inadequate. And I would encourage you to at least consider making those adjustments. We'd also encourage you, uh, the conversation that we had as a compensation committee, to adopt a formal policy of when the review will take place. And whether you look at it every year, but at a very minimum basis, it should be reviewed every four years. And I would always recommend the year before an election, because you could make the adjustments in December of that year, which would be budgeted into the following year. Uh, and then you don't know if you're running, if you're going to win the election, you're adjusting pay before an election. And at the very least, a minimum of that every four years, the December before would be a great policy or a great starting place for a policy. If you want to review it more often, put that into the policy, at least take a look at it every year, keep it up to date. But I don't think you should go 20 or 30 years, um, before you make an adjustment. When you look, like the trustees, for example, um, you know, I mean, we're talking $5,700 a year for trustees. And, you know, you look at where the other ranges are, the 90th percentile would be 13,257. That's a pretty big difference between what our trustees are being compensated at and what trustees at comparable townships are being compensated at.
The, uh, you know, the challenge here is I think, uh, none of us as board members, uh, are comfortable with the subject. And I think, uh, if, if looking back on the history of township boards, I'm not sure most have been, uh, comfortable with it. And that's why the can was kicked down the road, uh, for the last 30 years on even talking about it, uh, with the exception of the last board. Um, and we wanted to make sure that this board did it the right way. And, uh, I think we're doing that by having this discussion out in the open and, uh, having had a, a committee meet at least once or twice to talk about it. Um, I would like to, um, have another committee meeting. I know, I don't want to kick it down the road too much further before we bring it back to this board, but I would like to have one more committee meeting to talk about the responsibilities that go along with, uh, each of these roles. But I'd also like to see if there's a way we can put it out publicly as to what the 90th percentile is, um, that we're looking at and get some feedback from the public. Um, I did get, uh, several phone calls, uh, from individuals. Uh, I thought maybe a few of them might be here this evening. Um, they told me they might be here to, uh, comment on it, that, uh, they had some comments with regard to, uh, increases they thought would be, uh, uh, should be considered. And I know we have heard from individuals by phone in previous meetings. I have not heard any negative comments with regard to looking at this, uh, topic. Um, but I would invite those that, that do have any comments that detract from, you know, looking at this, uh, or considering increases for them to, uh, come forward and let us know. But unless anybody else, you know, and I encourage you to make any comments this evening, but I would like to maybe put it out on our social media that here's where township is and maybe even put this form in a format that, uh, we can present, uh, publicly and ask for input. Any thoughts? I see heads nodding and-
I've got some thoughts.
Go ahead, Joel.
You know, uh, as we mentioned before, Scott, I mean, this is such a thorny issue because it's us, right? You know? And it's why this hasn't been approved since 2007. It's because no board really feels comfortable in its sense raising our own wages. And, but I think since it's been that long and that if you look at the comparisons, that, you know, it, it would be a bold step and the right step to do. But I don't want to be, um, I don't want anybody to say, well, you slid this in at the, in the middle of the night, no one saw. And no, we really want to encourage the public, if anybody's watching on social media, or you can add it too, to give us your feedback. I want to hear how you feel about this. If you feel that this is not right, let's hear from you. If you feel that this is okay with you, let's hear from you, you know? I think the more public feedback, the better.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
And I think it's probably been closer to 30 years.
All right.
Uh,
Yes.
And it's been, it's been a long time. Uh, and this isn't, this isn't necess- this isn't, this is for future ports too. I mean, Dennis is right that it should be at least a year before an election that this should be revisited and make any adjustment necessary at the time.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I would say you'd, you'd maybe put this on the agenda for even the 27th.
Yeah.
So that's two weeks. People can give their input.
Right.
But I hate to keep on kicking this can.
I think we do put it on the next agenda, but I think we also put it out on social media in, in some form for the public to weigh in on it, uh, and show them where we're at and where the 90th percentile of similar type municipalities are and ask for the public to give their input.
Right. And even though I, I really think we're the drivers of Genesee County, we're not even going to be at the top of Genesee County. So.
Right. Yep. So.
But I think the whole suggestion by Dennis to, to put this in before the election so that there's some kind of a mechanism so that this doesn't happen again.
Yes.
Makes total sense. Um, let the, the outgoing board vote, you know, who knows? They might not be the, the recipients of that so that there's something in place to address this issue.
I think that, uh, if we can ask, uh, Mr. Lemata or Mr. Laddie to help us draft, uh, something along those lines, uh, that maybe at the same time that we present this at our next board meeting, that along with that, we have a motion to adopt a policy that, uh, this is reviewed, um, prior to, uh, a new board being installed. You know, set a date or what have you, that's so many months before the end of the term of the current board.
Right.
That this is, uh, discussed and any, you know, increase or decrease. There, there is a possibility that a position could be made, um, paid on a part-time basis as well, you know? Um, that was done with the supervisor position several years back. Um, and there may be in the future, uh, making them more in line with full-time or other positions being made part-time. So I think all those things should be examined, uh, prior to a new board being installed. So if you could help us with that, uh, Mr. Lemata and Mr. Laddie?
Okay.
Okay. So that's, uh, going to be a future agenda item. Then we'll plan on having this on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll ask for Ms. Roberts' help, uh, in putting this in some type of format that we can put on social media to, uh, ask for input. Mr. Lemata?
You want to schedule your compensation committee to meet before then or?
Yes. Um, so we're going to need to, uh, set up a meeting for that. Um, that consists of Mr. White, Mr. Fike, um, Mr. Kilmer and myself, correct? And then yourself, Mr. Lemata. So I don't know if we want to do that during the meeting or we want to convene right after and find a date that works?
It'll have to be next week if we're going to-
Right. Next week work for everybody? Anybody have their calendar here?
That'll be after the luau, right?
Correct.
Not immediately after.
We could do it at the luau, but it, uh, it needs to be a public meeting since there's four of us. So, um,
Just more tickets to sell.
Yeah. I would, uh, the, uh, I don't care. Is there a date in mind that, that's good? Is anybody going to be out of town next week, any days?
I'll be out starting on Thursday. I'll be up north for a wedding.
Okay. What if we-
We're doing them at Monday at four or five, I recall.
Say that again.
I think we, I think our last couple were at like Monday, on Mondays at four or five o'clock.
Does that work for you, Paul?
That's fine. We, as long as it's not before four.
Okay. What if we make it 4:30 on Monday, the 23rd?
I hope I'm not in court still.
Let's, you want to make it Tuesday then?
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
This is fine.
Tuesday, I think we have the ZBA meeting, so.
Okay. We'll make it Monday at 4:30.
Okay.
The 19th.
Yes.
Not the 23rd.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm-
Looking to know.
I'm looking at the wrong month.
June, July 19th.
Um, actually, I can't make it on Monday, um, 19th. Uh, we have a ribbon cutting for the Delaney, uh, Library.
Yes.
Right.
On that Monday. So, and there's a ZBA meeting on Tuesday? At what time? Five?
6:30.
6:30?
Well, it's, uh, DDA is at five.
Okay. That's right. Um,
It's Wednesday.
We have to work on it, Mr. Sprague.
You want to make it on Tuesday before the DDA? Like Tuesdays before four, bad for you, Paul?
It's, I mean, it's just tough. I, I, sometimes I have court stuff.
Okay. All right. Let's do it, uh, Wednesday then. Would that work?
Yes.
At, uh, 4:30? Okay. Wednesday, the 21st at 4:30.
21st?
Right. Very good. Thank you, uh, Ms. Roberts and, uh, Mr. Lemata for putting together the, uh, survey information. You have something Wednesday?
Yes, I do. I've got a, the, uh, board meeting, Community Foundation at four o'clock.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just saw that. And it's at the New Hilton.
Okay.
If you meet the days I'm not here, it's not that big of a deal. And certainly, um, executive coordinator Melissa can be there to, we, we'll provide whatever you need before I leave town.
Right. Um, are there any mornings that work for anybody?
Noon would work. Jump. Can you do a noon?
Uh, well, we can't do Monday. We can't, right. Um, I could do Tuesday at noon.
Tuesday at noon?
Yes, that would work for me.
You know, you could, you could consider the Monday, the 26th. It's the day before the board meeting. Just wouldn't be, you wouldn't have any materials into the packet, but you could certainly present whatever you want to present to the board on the 27th. And we'll have it noted on the agenda that it's going to be discussed.
Right. Would that work, the 26th then, 4:30?
Sure. 26th at 4:30?
Right. Okay. Let's go with that then. Are you going to be back in town, Mr. Lemata?
I believe so.
The 26th at 4:30? I'm sorry, what day of the week was this?
That's a Monday. Day before our next board meeting. Okay. Very good. It's much easier to schedule these meetings while we're right here.
Isn't it crazy?
Even though it's a little bit difficult, but, uh, thanks, everyone. Okay. Moving on next is, uh, future agenda items. One of the things that, uh, I'd ask Mr. Lemata is where we are at with regard to, uh, I know we've met with, uh, Mr. Bender a few times in terms of strategic planning, but we also met in terms of, uh, our positions on the board. And you'll see something that's, uh, at everybody's place and it says, uh, basically Grand Blank Township Workshop Summary from March 6th. And it pretty much outlines the job responsibilities of everybody, um, what the expectations are for each of the positions, what have you. We'll take, we'll wait a minute. We'll take, we'll wait a minute till Mr. Kilmer is back. We'll hold off just a few minutes.
Can we talk to Patrick about how things are going for Friday?
Sure. Come on up, Patrick, for a moment. Patrick, please come up to the podium.
You want to shout for the public?
Lenahan is our Parks Director for the public. We are streaming this, so. So this Friday, we have our luau fundraiser for Parks and Rec.
Yep. So the event takes place at five-thirty, five-thirty to ten o'clock. Uh, we have a great local pig roaster that's coming in, so he'll be providing the food. We also have a chicken option for those who don't want pork. Um, and, you know, there'll be sides and that along with that. Uh, when you come in, you'll also get some drink tickets that you can use. So, you know, this is our large fundraiser and that, so, you know, we'll have specialty cocktails. We'll have rum buckets. We'll, um, have some beer and wine that, you know, you're able to purchase towards, um, you know, fundraisers towards us. Uh, one of our local business, uh, businesses is donating all of that to us. Um, so it's going to be, um, you know, all that's going to help to provide the programs and events that Parks and Rec puts on. Uh, around nine-thirty, we'll have the Polynesian dancers of Michigan take stage and they're going to be doing a hula show and fire dancers, uh, which is going to be a, a really cool thing. Uh, we're also going to have yard games and that set up throughout the park. Um, so, you know, as you're kicking back with your friends, uh, you can, uh, play some cornhole, play some bags, uh, play yard pong, uh, those sort of things. We'll also have a DJ. So Joel, if you want to come out and show us your moves, uh, we got that going on. So, you know, it, it should be a good event. Um, I'm not in charge of the weather, so, uh, we're trying our best right now. Uh, it, it looks like, um, you know, it should pass us, but we'll be ready either way. So come on out.
Very good.
Tickets left.
Uh, if you would like some, uh, talk to me after the meeting and, uh, we can certainly get some your way.
So lawn games, I'm thinking jarts, but I don't know what those are, but.
Catch it with your eye.
Liability alarm bells are ringing.
No, but.
Younger folks here probably don't even know what those are, but, uh, lawn darts kind of explains it, but.
Loose with those on purpose.
Well, you know, we, we definitely couldn't do this event, uh, you know, without our sponsors. And we really appreciate, you know, what they've been able to, uh, to do to help us out with this event. Um, so, you know, without them, this wouldn't be possible. And, you know, we're, we're looking to have a lot of fun and, uh, hopefully you guys can join us, so.
We're looking forward to a lot of fun and, uh, we're glad that you're putting this event together and.
Thank you.
It's going to be sunny weather.
It is. I'll hold you to that.
Okay. We're going to decree it is correct.
Can I ask what the schedule is for this? I missed that.
Sure. Five-thirty is the beginning.
Yep. So, so, uh, gates open at five-thirty. Um, the food will be served at six. And then, oh, we, we also have some great raffle prizes and that. Um, so, uh, we've got a cooler that's going to be filled with some adult goodies. Uh, it's going to have a Bluetooth speaker, you know, some beach sort of things. Uh, we also have gift cards to local businesses that have been donated that we'll be raffling off and that too. So, um, you know, if you come out, just make sure you bring some cash with you and that to, uh, to get some raffle tickets. And then, you know, if, uh, you want to buy some drink tickets.
So Friday.
Friday.
This coming Friday. So there are tickets still available if they contact you, you might have, you left.
There is no day of sales, right? If they show up or they?
Um, i- i- if, if you show up on the day, um, you know, we can't guarantee food. Uh, but, you know, if you want to come in and, um, um, you know, ha- have some beverages and watch a show, you know, we, we will allow that. But at this point, um, you know, for the public, we, we had to put our food order in about, you know, a week and a half ago. So, you know, the food's already ordered, so we're, we're capped at that.
So we're looking at a couple hundred people probably.
Yep.
Very good.
Yep.
Well, great job to you and your staff.
Thank you.
And you have a great tournament this weekend, a hundred teams that were out there this past weekend?
Yep. Yep. Fire Six Tournament was last weekend. Um, so, uh, brought a lot of people in. Uh, you know, you saw people in softball uniforms all over town and that. So, um, it's a very popular event. It's a college exposure tournament. Um, and, you know, park was full for three days, so.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Great job. Okay, um, back to future agenda items. I know, uh, one of the things I handed out was this Grand Lake Township Workshop Summary dated March sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And if recall, we, we had Mr. Bender here as a facilitator, kind of went through what our position, what we thought the various positions, uh, areas of responsibility were and what, um, we're going to try and hold each other accountable for. And then each of the positions are detailed here. And I know one of the things on the back, it's highlighted that, uh, um, the supervisory board should periodically review and discuss these expectations determined that everyone is living up to what they agreed to do. Um, one of the things I want to do is put on the agenda to, uh, talk about this a little bit more at our next meeting. Um, and I think, I know, uh, one of the topics we need to cover is with regard to, um, the treasurer's office and staffing, um, in there. So, um, Mr. Reardon?
I really don't want to be blindsided. Uh, can you? I mean, I don't go into a lot of depth, but what's?
Right. I think, you know, I don't want to get any personal, you know, business, but I think, uh, the board wants to, um, have a discussion regarding covering the statutory responsibilities in the treasurer's office. So, um, I think that's what we want to discuss a little bit. But also with that, making sure all of us in our positions are, are covering the responsibilities.
Can I ask?
Sure, Mr. Fike.
Mark, could I ask you some questions about that?
Yeah.
Are you able to, you know, perform your duties on, in light of, uh, your situation?
It's a hard question to answer. I think I'm in a situation where my performance will increase. I've had a bad run of experience. But, uh, I'm headed in that, in the right direction. I know that doesn't answer all your questions, but.
Okay. I guess my question is, you know, what does that, the job of treasurer entail as far as workload goes?
Well, that's a good question. Mainly it involves keeping track of the financial reports and investment reports reporting back to the board, uh, which we will be doing before the end of the month.
I think that's kind of what we need to have the discussion on. You know, the, um, the statutory responsibilities of, you know, the officer's positions. The officer positions are the ones that have the statutory responsibilities. Um, and those things can't be, um, delegated away or hired away. So, for example, the position of clerk, for example, um, while we can have people assist with the election, um, the statutory requirements of the clerk stay with the clerk. Same with the treasurer and same with the supervisor. And so, you know, my, my concern is that while we have a deputy that's, uh, doing, um, the work of, of the treasurer office, there are certain statutory, uh, requirements that we need to make sure are being fulfilled. Um, one of the things when we have our audit, um, annually is, uh, they need to make sure that certain things are being overseen by certain individuals. And, um, while we, you know, uh, have been successful in making sure that all our Ts are dotted and Is are, or Is are dotted and Ts are crossed in the past, we need to make sure that we continue to do that. But part of that is making sure the right people are approving certain things. And there's certain things that we can't shove off. We will have that, but. So take a look at the responsibilities and let's, uh, be prepared for discussion on that at our next meeting. With that, uh, we'll jump down to zoning board of appeals. Mr. White, anything to report on?
There's a meeting on, uh, next Tuesday at six-thirty.
Okay. Any idea what the topic is or just out of curiosity?
No, at this point.
Okay.
Appeals.
Mr. Fike? Uh, natural alliance. I'm hearing that you guys are very active.
Yes. Um, as Monica mentioned, uh, this is the time of the year where this transportation improvement program or TIP and call for projects happen. And, uh, they generally start in the late summer. And so if there's a road project that you've been thinking about, that would be wonderful, and I'm sure Dennis is already thinking about these, uh, now is the time to start, you know, letting them know and having discussions with, uh, the Genesee County Metropolitan Alliance. So for any future road projects, you know, we have several that are ongoing, but then there might be other things that are coming up in the future. Two, five, ten years from now that we should be saying, look, this is a long-range thing that we need to get at. And I'm sure you're on this, Dennis, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fike. Clerk Robertson, or I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Reardon, anything with regard to police?
Upcoming retirement from a police detective sergeant. And pretty much everything else is going pretty good.
Good. Okay. Mr. Kilmer, anything, treasurer?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Robertson?
Um, no, well, other than to mention that we should know by the end of the month whether or not we will have a, an issue for the ballot in November, whether or not we'll have another election. I don't know whether we will have, I will have the answer by July twenty-seventh, our next meeting, but I'm told that we should know before the end of July.
Do we know what's being considered to be on the ballot?
The rumor is that there might be a, a veterans' millage. Um, but that's, uh, there's been no, no action taken on it yet. That's just conversation among the clerk network about the possibility.
Or a county millage?
County, yes. County.
Something new or?
No, a renewal.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, as I mentioned before, excuse me, the, uh, I just wanted to mention, I know Mr. Piro, uh, brought up the, the pathways that, uh, we're working on. And it's certainly been a group effort over multiple years. And it just so happens that this year is when, uh, we're beginning on that project. I know, you know, Mr. Limata probably will give in his report, uh, with regard to the Baldwin Road, but the DDA, um, is continuing to meet monthly, obviously. And the topic of concern for them is the Baldwin Road corridor. Uh, but it looks like we're going to have discussions on, uh, we originally, we're going to try and make it a Class A, uh, all-season road from Dort Highway all the way to, um, the Trim Pines property. Originally, I think we, we thought it was going to be able to be shorter than that, but, uh, we're going to have to extend it a little bit further. And so we're having some further engineering work done to be able to make it to the Trim Pines Farm. You know, going along with that, we asked the DDA to consider engineering in there, uh, the possibility of a pathway as well so that, uh, we could extend it from Dort going down Baldwin and eventually all the way to Saginaw Street. So, uh, some exciting things happening there. You know, one of the things that we also discussed, and I think maybe, uh, Mr. Lenahan brought it to our attention, that, uh, the pathway, part of the Iron Bell Pathway, uh, could qualify for CDBG funds since it's in, uh, a low-income area or an area that the federal government deems is, uh, able to, we're able to use that CDBG money in. So, um, that's kind of exciting that, to think that we could get part of that done as well in the next couple of years. So, um, on the pathway area, we are making substantial progress. So with that, Mr. Limata, your report? I guess we have Mr. Laddie next. Mr. Laddie, anything?
I have anything to add.
Okay. Mr. Limata?
Um, I will, since, uh, Trustee Hugo is not here, I was at the planning commission meeting, uh, just so that I can give you the report. I didn't stay for the entire meeting. I was only there for the first two hours. But they, uh, there was, uh, one thing on the agenda was the master plan, future land use map. And to move that document forward, um, you know, we'd had, uh, some joint meetings with them. We'd, uh, met with the DDA and, and some members of the planning commission and some members of the board. They'd gone through this thing with kind of a fine-tooth comb. And the areas of concern that were noted from the board, uh, were updated into that future land use map for some of the zoning districts. Uh, and I think that they arrived at a very workable solution. It required quite a bit of conversation, but it was approved. Uh, and, uh, that starts the sixty-three-day notice period. But did you get any information from Jill? She said something about maybe it was a forty-two-day notice period since it had been approved once by the planning commission?
No, but I'll, I'll follow up with her.
If you would, that'd be great. Um, if we can shave it to forty-two days, that'd even be better. But it starts a public notice period because again, the planning commission approved it last year. The board, uh, withheld approval, kicked it back for further review. The, uh, and, and I'm glad you did because several members of the public then came out and expressed some concerns about where some of the future land use, uh, zoning districts have been placed. And there was some question about the idea of flexible development. It actually has existed since two thousand and twelve, uh, but it'd never been defined in the zoning ordinance. It just said we should have a flexible development district. That still exists in the future land use map, but with the charge that they're going to start working on. Uh, and David will certainly be a part of that along with Jeremy and Jill Bame. But to really start, um, filling out what the future land use, uh, maps designation as a flexible development, what does that entail? Uh, this is where we really have the opportunity as a township to decide what that is. It's envisioned as, uh, it could be residential, could be light industrial, could be, you know, commercial, could be a lot of things, but, um, this is where the board and the planning commission and planners have an opportunity to really shape what that looks like. But I'm happy that it went through, uh, some of the areas that needed to be addressed would have a huge impact on some proposed development with some property that is currently under contract. If we weren't going to, if we were going to allow the zoning map, the future land use map to go through as it was proposed, uh, last year, it would have killed some projects for us that are worth a considerable amount of money, including an eighty thousand square foot headquarters, uh, building that, uh, potentially is worth ten million dollars. And, uh, this means that if it is the sixty-three days, it will come back to the board. There will have to be a public hearing still. There will be some, you know, we'll take in public comment if the board approves it in September. I think September ninth would be the sixty-third day. Uh, you approve it after that, you'll see some folks coming in asking for rezoning and bringing in some pretty amazing site plans for us to consider. So that's an exciting opportunity. It ties back into that southern end of the township where that vacant land is within the DDA. Uh, it will drive certainly some economic development moving us forward. Uh, assists us with the Tech Village project. And that's kind of why this whole KCI project was important because all these things are kind of coming to fruition now after a lot of years of work. So it's an exciting time. I'm glad to see that went through. The clock's ticking now. We're moving it forward. I think it did address the concerns that the board had. The other thing I have for you is that fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget preparation starts now. As hard as that is to believe, uh, those of you, uh, the officers of the board certainly, um, Treasurer Kilmer, Clerk Robertson, Supervisor Bennett, uh, you guys, because you, uh, control, uh, budgets, um, you're going to be receiving a letter from me shortly along with some budget documents. It's going to walk you through the process. For everybody though, this kicks off the process now in July. It goes out to department heads. We will make sure that the approved strategic plan item becomes a focus in our projected budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. We will make sure that the approved strategic plan item becomes a focus in our projected budget for the fiscal year 2022. But then this is an opportunity for the board to weigh in as well and all the trustees. Some of the key areas that I think are important are making sure that we budget appropriately for training. You heard actually the outgoing Planning Commissioner, Mr. Brown, talk about how much it meant to him to be able to attend the planning meetings and what he learned and some of the key takeaways that he got. A lot of it is just the connections you make, but make sure that we've designated enough training dollars for all of you to be able to go to the MTA training, to the Michigan Treasurers, Michigan Clerks, Michigan Supervisors Conferences. The MML, we are a member of as an associate member that you guys can attend MML. But I think that's one of the areas focused. This is a newer board and that could be really key for your board development. If there's opportunities that you guys want to take, make sure as these budget things roll out that we're, you let Scott know and he'll make sure that in the legislative portion, that there is ample dollars in there for you guys to be able to do what you need to do to carry your mission forward. But as crazy as it sounds, we have to, I have to start doing the revenue projections for 2022 and really it's predicated, I mean, our, we got a set piece of pie, right? I mean, it's going to be, the dollars are what they are and we have to make the expenditures fit with that. I haven't lost sight of the fact that, and it showed up in your strategic plan, that unfunded liabilities are one of the keys and that will remain a key and it will remain in my narrative out to the department heads. I continue year after year since I've been here, recommend an austerity budget. We're not looking to add a lot of new programs or things like that until we get the unfunded liabilities addressed. Now, that may change slightly based upon, you know, our revenue projections. We did pick up $65 million in taxable value last year, so our Board of Review approved taxable value went up by $65 million. That's great news. That puts us where we were in 2007. In 2007, since then, wages have gone up, healthcare has gone up phenomenally, even though we've done all the work to try to adjust that. Just things have gone up, but yet we finally, after all this time of, of coming back out of the recession where we lost six years of negative values, clawing our way back up, we're back at the 2007 levels. So you can imagine the impact of our revenue is at 2007 levels. Our expenditures are at 2021 levels. So it's, it remains a challenge. It remains, you know, but the job that you've done, previous boards before you addressing the unfunded liabilities has been phenomenal. I think we have to keep our foot on that gas, keep that focus. I'm glad it's in your strategic plan. But that process started. You'll see those coming out. We'll kind of, especially this is the first year for this group walking through this. We will do a budget presentation. You'll have the department heads available. They're going to walk you through. By law, I have to have it to you, the preliminary budget, by September 1st of every year. We have to approve it by December 31st every year or the state could come in and take over your unit because you don't have a budget. If we don't have a budget approved by December 31st, we do not have authorization to spend. So we couldn't even pay the bills. We couldn't do anything. So it's, it's kind of that process. But how it works, September 1st, you guys will be, we'll send it to you electronically. We'll have hard copies for you at the following meeting. We'll give you a good 30 days or a month to really digest what's in there. We'll start doing the presentation where we can walk you through with the department heads to make sure you're comfortable with where we're at from our proposed expenditures, personnel levels, that kind of thing. We'll have plenty of time for one-on-one with the idea that we can probably have it in November, the second, I think there's three meetings in November, so that second meeting in November that you guys would be able to do the truth in taxation hearing and make sure that we're putting the right millages out and then two weeks later approve the budget. Plenty of time. We still have a month if there's any questions and you want to review it before the end of the year.
Seems like we just did this.
It, it always does. It's kind of, the way it works is as soon as we get done with the audit, you guys just had the audit presentation. As soon as the audit's done, then the budget prep for the following fiscal year starts and takes up all of our time. So it's just that crazy cycle.
Right. And this board did approve the current budget. So you've seen the tail end of the process in terms of approval. And I would, Dennis, it's not necessarily the budget he created.
I wasn't here. I just cannot reiterate that enough.
But this board did approve the current budget, so we've seen the tail end, like I said. So we'll look forward to this board seeing the entire process from start to finish. Any thoughts on, you know, you mentioned revenue expenditures, but anything with regard to projected revenues from the state?
You know, the nice thing is, is those revenue conferences that they do twice a year, they did it three times last year because of COVID. They, who knows, maybe they'll do it again this year. But revenues are so high with the state right now, they're, they're flush. And what we're hearing from our revenue sharing, and again, I'll, I'll share something with the board as we move forward through this process and show you if revenue sharing had continued like it, it should have, in my humble opinion. But it was cut back, you know, for budget constraints by the legislature, no offense. But if you looked at the amount of money that, if we had stayed on the trajectory, and really that revenue sharing is to, you know, share that money and pay us back for some of the work that we do, if you looked at that, we're probably down about $14 million. Well, that would have covered our, a big chunk of our unfunded liabilities had that, those revenue sharing payments continued. The township's done fine. We're on very stable financial footing. You heard it with your auditors. We've done a great job. But there are some challenges and number one for us is those unfunded liabilities. We want to get those off our plate so they don't become an albatross around our neck. And now that we have Clerk Robertson working on our side here, we may be able to restore more of the revenue sharing dollars.
I was on your side when I was there too, so there you go. I expect to get a little gentle ribbing about my previous life. I expect that.
All right, very good. I think we're ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion or?
Mr. Feig had his hand up, so I'll stop that as.
And I will support it and we are adjourned at 9:10 PM.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, you guys, for being here.